Waiting for anybody else.
Uh, no.
Feeling good?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I'll call this meeting to order at five thirty PM. I'm Brian, could you roll call please?
Hi, Mr. Lindberg.
Here.
Mr. Grunville here, Mr. Beazer.
Here.
Mr. Kurtz and Hugley are absent.
Thank you. Okay, notice of agenda compliance. Um, can I get a motion that the regular meeting was in compliance with Idaho code?
I moved the notice for the July seventh twenty twenty five meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho code section seventy four dash two oh four.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Alright.
Right, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to any call for conflict from the commissioners on the agenda items. None, everybody's good. Okay, um, is there any public comment tonight for items that are not on the agenda? Doesn't look like it. Okay, we'll close public comment. Um, and we'll start tonight with old business. Um, which is the application for a design review approval from Beans and Brew Coffee, um, which we saw at our last meeting and had a continuation on a few open items that the commission wanted to get a follow up on. Um, Brian, did you ever report that you wanted to go over on that?
Uh, briefly, uh, yeah, so like I said, this was for you guys' last meeting, uh, was continued, uh, to get some more information on traffic counts, uh, vest room and plan and striping, uh, snow storage, retaining wall at the rear of the property, update several plans, a couple of items I'm probably not thinking of at the moment. Uh, as far as I'm aware, all that information has been provided by the applicant and, uh, what to be what you guys were looking for. The, uh, plan has been updated based on the topography of the site to include a retaining wall and a uh, vertical fence above the retaining wall, uh, to allow force to be pushed uh, to the rear of the site without going over the hill into the neighboring property. The applicant provides some traffic estimates from a different, uh, location of the same chain that I believe said thirty to fifty AMP hour would be a generous, uh, amount of people coming through there. Um, yeah, then that, uh, Stanford questions and the applicant is also here, uh, like I said.
Okay, did you wanna present anything?
No.
All good.
Yeah.
Okay. Things that just updates. Yeah. I'll double check that pedestrian thing, which, um, that's looks like San Shu University one. What, that's something we talked about at the last meeting, so, um, I think the plan that the applicant gave is a lot more specific on what we talked about with the flow of the cars. I don't know if you guys remember that, but.
I would not take those.
Oh, okay. So I think the original application, we didn't really see anything like how cars or people would be directed.
Oh, gotcha.
Like and where, like maybe how you come out.
Where they come into and out of the site.
The in was fairly clear, but not necessarily the out. Like whether they'd come on that back end and people would kind of cut cross it back towards the incoming, so we kind of asked if it could be directed out a different direction. And then that would leave pedestrian access and keep all parking right there, like not really walking into cross traffic that way. Um, and then I think the plan added the lines for, um, the pedestrian lines for the other two businesses, like to access the sidewalk at Atkinson's and then to the dollar store next door.
Yeah, some additional signage has been proposed as well. Um, I'm definitely feeling a lot better about the, um, revised plan set, so thank you to the applicant for, um, taking our comments into consideration.
Absolutely. Yeah, Eric, since you're on this meeting, do you have any specific questions that you wanted to go over?
I don't. Um, I took a quick look at the, um, at the application for the last meeting, um, but I did not have a chance to, to unit review kind of what the discussion and what the, uh, you know, what you guys were talking about when, when you were connecting that, okay, the application, so.
Yeah, so I'll kind of just give some highlights then based on what Brian reminded us about our open items. Um, uh, we were interested in hearing just, um, estimates on the amount of cars that would be visiting the business, um, in peak hours. So the client answered that, the client, sorry, that's my word of time. Sorry, the applicant answered those questions, um, and gave those estimates, which I think, um, are more reasonable. I think we were trying to come up with like peak number, really high numbers on what it could possibly be, so be seen more reasonable. Um, the pedestrian access and the parking was really important to us. Um, and then also there's a lot of discussion on, um, the rear of the property and the snow storage, which I think you usually provide a lot of feedback on that topic. Uh, mainly like snow being pushed back. Does that sound familiar, Brian? Like in our last discussion, we were worried about snow kind of going down, um, into the neighborhood, so.
So if they look at the focal line on their grading plan, this looks like he just proposed grading not existing. Uh, but it drops substantially at the rear of the lot, so they're flattening out the snow storage area and they'll put a retaining wall and then a vertical, it would stand up above the ground, uh, so that snow can be pushed up against that reinforced fence.
I don't have any questions. General, I think good.
Yeah, I think it sounds like the building's been pushed up a little bit, so some of that bulk of snow storage has kind of shifted to the front. And I do think that, um, the landscaping and sort of the rock landscaping and having the grading and seeing how it will drain definitely quells a lot of the, the issues I had, um, without this information earlier.
I don't believe the building has moved to just the, uh, turn radius around back to drive through like then it is.
Yeah, the parking lot, which the word lost two spots in the back, which reduced the hard surface areas, so then reduced the snow surface area or the snow storage area a little bit.
Okay.
But even though the building's in the same spot, but that back little landscape area right where the AC pad and everything got smaller as well. And then the other thing, did you get that reciprocal?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that kind of lined out the reciprocal easement lined out the maintenance of the snow storage. I don't think they'll ever push snow back there, but if they do, we'll have that wall just in case.
And that one little parking island is the only landscaped area that we have on this. Is that right?
That little one in the front? I thought so.
Yes, the very good trees.
Yeah. Extension of the partial island at the front that is currently there. And then right behind the building, there's, it's just like, take a trouble or something, do that effect back, yeah, right.
And then it did look like there's some natural landscaping proposed for the back slope of the, of the site, which I think would be good for the residents who live down in that neighborhood.
I think that's pretty tough with this.
Okay. Good. I am so on page twelve of our packets as a suggestion motion, I can get a motion from the commissioners.
Where is that?
Uh, page twelve, or sorry, I don't know what it is on PDF, but there's a, there's a number label on it for twelve.
There, you know, I forgot to put the page number on there that day, so a lot of that.
Worries.
Oh.
Uh, I don't think this is the.
It's not?
I guess I can take stab at it. Um, I moved to approve the design review application for Beans and Brew's coffee and direct staff uh, to sign findings of fact.
I was, is that me?
Amendment to that, I do not, I just attest to the fact that the chair signs the things, so just strike that part out.
Okay.
There's nothing direct me to do.
Do you want me to repeat that then?
I will amend or I will, uh, second the motion as amended.
Okay, all those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Well, one ten? Good. Yes.
Alright, moving on to our next action item is an application from Wild Group at eighty one Martin Lane um, for a design review approval to change the exterior siding on an existing structure.
Yes, well, we might be applicant present for this one, uh, but it is a design review application, uh, they started work, uh, and got notified that they need ability permit to design review approval because they're in business, so, so it is partially constructed at the moment. Uh, but they are changing the exterior siding, um, it's currently long siding on, on top of the plywood on the bottom, they're doing a something fancier than plywood, but, um, refinishing it, it generally meets our design standards. Uh, the only item of note is that there is a uh, storage shed constructed of uh, two star, two shipping containers, a trust structure between the two and then a cylindrical, uh, plastic cover, um, but I do not see how it can meet our design standards, uh, so whether they finish our approval, but it is here.
Oh.
I will stay at great, but.
Is that sort of like, did that come up kind of a code violation?
Yeah.
You know, okay, gotcha. So it's like, Smithy application on the siding and then like the others. Okay. Um, yeah, so um, the pictures, you know, like of the existing structure and what they're proposing to change it to from materials, obviously it looks like an improvement.
I have no issue with the proposal.
You didn't do a picture of that storage. No, I didn't structure. You then go like the, uh, whole bed of blinking light, like a small word.
Okay, so that's coming down.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Unless you guys vote to keep.
Okay. I see, that was a question. So. And is it, can I, and just to clarify, it's because they put something over the top of it, it's kind of like connect it and make it a structure, like could you have storage containers just fine or not, like if they were just on their own?
Shipping container is a bit of a gray area, you know. I mean, I think they qualify as a structure based on the definition of structure in our code, uh, I think they would need to be cited or based or something to be compliant with our design standards.
Okay. Right, um, yeah, I agree with the, um, with the drafted or suggested motion as it's written in the plan that, um, they have to get a building permit by those specifications and remove the storage units. There if it's those little things. The increments. I mean, I think a bit of me, especially like kind of not being right on Main Street, like would think about allowing the storage units, but I also like us kind of cementing, like we're not, we're not doing that.
That, that's.
You know, for the, for the zone.
Like another two, it's like I I'm sympathetic to the desire or need to, uh, you know, to have that storage there, um, and you know, you're but, and the other hand, code is the code and.
You know, have you have some specific thoughts on stored or on shipping containers like this?
Um, I think it's a little difficult because it is sort of one step back from the main road. I think if this property were closer, um, I would be in favor of removing this storage area, but, um, it does look fairly industrial. So I don't necessarily have a problem, but I, I do worry about sort of the gray area that opens up, um, of having this be a case by case basis. If we let them keep it, who else also gets to keep it because of our decision now?
Yeah, we've talked about it a little bit before, like, you know, we're not required to like, to do the exact same things that we have done with other applications, right? Like the precedent argument doesn't necessarily exist.
Not necessarily. Does get a lot harder when they start pointing around now and things that you have specifically approved that are
Yeah.
similar nature and similar zone and so on.
And sorry if I missed this, is the applicant, um, are they pretty intent on keeping that? Um, do they utilize that, uh, storage unit pretty often or is it sort of a light desire?
I would ask the applicant that, but they're not present.
Okay. Um, I think if, I think if we had a poll to let them keep edges out of, out of need, like, like you mentioned, I might be interested in talking about removing this roofing structure that they created between the two of them, like strip it down and just be a shipping container, not this structural thing that they've done, but.
They could also go back with a actual, you know, roofed stick built structure could achieve, say, be just
Hmm.
would necessarily be the cylindrical thing that it would.
Oh, like by saying, oh, you mean by saying that, like, just take the roof off, like if, if they built something over it, would they be happy with that? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, they could build something that is more consistent with our existence, that could still store, but whatever they store there.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think I'd be more in favor of a permanent style building over something that's meant to be impermanent, um, that they've made more permanent. If that makes sense.
Would you prefer, you're saying you prefer that also over no structure over the top of them, like if we were like, just make them be shipping containers and not have a roof over the top?
Or rather, um, remove the shipping containers and build a purpose-built shed or accessory building for their desired uses.
Yeah, let's wish.
Who would care? I mean.
I mean, that's the, the thing that all of us could do, right, sort of my data.
Yeah, to get that much storage that is as weather tight as a as a shipping container, that's a project. Um, and you know, I, I'm hesitant to, it, it's tough with the applicant not being here, um, but I guess and this is probably me as an individual more than me as a
Hmm.
commissioner, but I'm, I, I have a, a little bit of a bad taste in the mouth that like these folks are trying to improve their property and you know, for us to say, oh, well, you can always just build a structure to, you know, it, it's like, that's a thirty to fifty thousand dollar sentence, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
When you pull, pull the shipping containers out of there, um, and to build, you know, to build a structure that is weather tight, you know, with a, you know, with slab and that, you know, that meets code is, that's a serious undertaking. I'm, I'm definitely sympathetic to, um, I, I, I can, I can appreciate both sides of the, you know, of the coin on this of like, we can't, we can't allow like shipping container skyscrapers and, uh, the, you know, if it was on Main Street, I would be a lot quicker to say, oh yeah, it's gotta, it's gotta go away, you know, but it's sitting right next to a machine ship and and it's I don't feel great about saying, oh yeah, you gotta ruin that.
Yeah, so in that case, would you uh, uh, allow what has happened to remain or would you remove some of that other structure and just leave kind of exposed shipping containers?
I'm I think I think I could be persuaded to say remove the roof structure, uh, yeah, I think, I think removing the roof structure is appropriate, um, but a couple of a couple of shipping containers on the, you know, the back corner of that lot is not offensive to me. Um, and the amount of utility that they provide is we, you know, it, it's not easy to replicate that with a, with freezing in the structure without, you know. It, it's not just a, it's not just standing up a pole barn to, to, to park a, you know, park a little bit of equipment under, you know, that's, that is, um, it's weather tight, it's gonna keep pests out, it's you know, I don't know what he's using it for, uh, what they're using it for. Um, but there's a lot of things that you, that you might keep in a, in a storage container like that, that you, that you wouldn't just you know, put in a, in a covered storage area, pole barn, main two sort of thing. Uh, it's a, it's a real deal weatherproof structure that, that we're talking about as a, as a, you know, what would serve that purpose. So I, I guess I'm inclined to but then the flip side of that is if we comment on it specifically and say you have to remove the roof, we are then more directly giving approval to the rest of it.
Hmm.
Um, you know, there's a side of me that, I mean, can we can we just issue the, the building permit for the improvement of the main structure and just not address the non-conforming building on the property?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, what I, I don't want to go against what we have in the code, you know, so I'm like, my tax brain turns on though and I'm like,
Right.
they're not really a structure, they're movable.
Yeah.
You know, but, but I think the applicant by doing their, their adjustments to it by creating a roof and stuff, they're really establishing it more as a structure and that's not followed with code.
Sure.
Okay, Brian.
Uh, yeah.
And I think that's where we come in, sort of thing, where I'm like, well, you've kind of made it a structure now, you've kind of made it our business. Oh, or temporary.
So a, any structure either permanent or temporary fix or place upon land or housing or supporting any use for occupancy.
That's like everything. Yeah. And I think, I mean, I think we all understand the utility of them, but obviously like the way storage containers look and stuff and we're talking about anything with our code, whether it's business zone or residential zone, like we don't want to see them, right, like.
Yeah. It.
Are they allowed in industrial zones, like?
The same design review standards apply in all commercial roads, they're all not our eventual roads, I should say.
Gotcha.
Uh, and so the two that I'm really having to hang up on are the building and shop front design shall reflect historical architectural styles and shall incorporate building materials, architectural design and features represented above that historical period in belvy between eighteen eighty and nineteen ten. That architectural style includes frame and brick construction, frame and chiplats, siding concerning the horizontal log construction and similar westward extension of the piece. Also, building, design and construction shall preserve and incorporate any such existing structures and features, signed exterior fixtures and other items from that period. Uh, so that is the first one that
Yeah.
I am struggling to see where this. Struggling to see where this.
Yeah.
Uh, fits and then the other uh there. Metal siding shall be permitted on buildings of. On parcels of real property funding Main Street unless deemed appropriate by planning zoning commission, all such buildings shall be constructed based materials that are similar texture finish. And appearance to natural materials, the use of natural materials such as wood, brick and stone shall be encouraged in exterior walls. Fellers shall be of natural earth components.
Wait.
So this is not funding Main Street. That was a little bit of an interpretation of what all such buildings entails.
Mm hmm.
But it's just referred to on the main street or. All metal siding.
Do we know at all how long they've been there? The the shipping containers?
They appear early. Is there actually anything in code about temporary use of them? Of shipping containers, yeah.
I mean, the thing we just read said permanent or temporary use, so. I guess that that would be up to us if we're like, oh, they're just. Constructing something and you know, you've got a shipping container on the property like I had in my house when it was being built or something, right?
Exactly, I mean, you they get. Museum on construction sites all the time. For storage material.
Hmm. Yeah.
Tools and things like that.
I think with the 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 roofing structure that they've created, it doesn't seem to be temporary.
Right, I I get that. Um.
Um, maybe a follow up. Brian, do you know at all if there is a lot of other business or properties in the business zone that have shipping entities on them? Let me know this if this is a.
Nothing is jumping out at me, I would. Presume they're all nonconforming. Three days ago.
Yeah, just something I've. Thought of, right? Especially if we've got, you know, like our code enforcement officer going around. Finding them. Um, yeah, I get the utility, but I think our code is pretty clear, so. I don't think they're meant to be temporary. From what they've constructed around them, so I'd say they go there.
You guys are also welcome to continue with this until such time that the applicant is available to. I I'd be okay with that, I mean.
What do we think we want to know from the applicant? That would change the situation.
Um.
So maybe the language is either remove them or. Find a way to conform them to our code. Right, like you had kind of mentioned before, like you know, you put siding on them or something, I don't know, like.
Do some sort of clouding on them to. Or.
Yeah.
Or screening. I mean.
Could be open on.
Is a dumpster a structure?
Ooh, you could get in it like I was like, I think it's a funny question, but it's a good one, right? It's temporary. You know, what did it also say, like whether it could be movable, it was permanent or temporary?
Fixed or placed upon land. Supporting any use or occupancy. I mean, that definition in some ways is so broad, it's probably referring to. Building code. There are use classifications that international building code that.
Hmm.
That I guessing is what that is attempting to get at. Should probably say uh the bindin. I B C.
Sure. Gotcha. It is very broad.
My inclination would be to.
I mean, I know you mentioned like, you know, the cost of actually building a brand new structure and not necessarily getting like the weather. Protected or weather tight features that you can get with storage units uh or shipping containers um. You know, but it is a proposal you could do like a quick little swoop around it, right? That's. Not as expensive.
Well, so that would be the the question I would have is like if, you know, if you did a. If you did a like pole barn. That those shipping containers could live inside it underneath.
Yeah.
To screen them from view.
Hmm.
Um. To. To me, then those shipping containers are contents of a structure.
Hmm.
And not a structure enough of sellers. Uh, so. I think I would. But then. Is it possible to build a pole barn that meets? Design review criteria for. Our business district. Absolutely, I can get got you down. Yeah. I was, and so. Can we put some language together that says the the. Like the roof structure that has been attached to these storage. Containers has to be removed and. If the storage and the containers must be removed unless a structure. That meets designer review standards can be erected. To screen them.
I mean, it could be pretty basic where it's like. Remove the structures or bring in them, bring them up to match our code, code has to go through design review on the new structure like the, you know, where they go.
Okay, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that.
I'm in favor of that, and I think. Hopefully the applicant would appreciate that they were we're willing to work with them on this.
Okay, so we'd update on our list here. So we have the motion, we have the conditions of approval currently are written as. A building permit is required and prior to the issuance of the building permit, an applicant shall remove the roof, trust structure and storage units from the property and then. Brian, we could just add the language or. Bring uh bring the structure up to code and submit a design review application. Um, all right, with that, does anyone have a? Motion on this? Do you guys have the language in front of you? It's on my page thirty two.
Yeah. Um, I am new that we improved designer review twenty five dash zero one. As as amended with the two conditions of approval. And direct staff to prepare for verifying the fact conclusions of law and decision documents reflecting this recommendation. Based on the record provided.
Second.
Right, all of them favor?
Right.
I. Great, motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'm just getting, no, it's good. It's funny how many times I've had those kind of talks with like tax situations, though, right? Like. How does it work for that? Totally different when you're talking about. See you. Um, okay. Next. Um, an application for a design review approval for the replacement of a door and installation and um. An installation of a window to the existing structure located at two oh eight North Main Street. Uh. Brian, you have any staff report on this?
Uh, yeah, this one's pretty straightforward. This is the existing uh formerly residential structure that has been converted into a nail salon and retail. Uh, store, they're wanting to add in a third fitness to the property of a. Uh, small restaurant. Uh, to facilitate that, they're wanting to replace the door and add a window uh in addition to some interior. Uh, building modifications that. It's all a commercial kitchen for everything up to code. Uh, so it is pretty, or really a very minor expenditure change um. And generally meet their. Go departments already, uh, just just bring it, make it better.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
We have this thing live with us? Right, uh, this thing make it. Sophie.
Can't really see a whole lot better here. You happen to have this with you. Okay.
Okay, but I see them.
So this bottom prime rectangle here is the retail space. Uh, this line right here is the divider between the nail slot and the proposed restaurant.
Well. So just a door and a window.
Yeah.
Uh, here's the video.
Through windows.
Outside.
Yeah.
Natural light in and then the doors are we there, but we just want to take it into the glass door.
Hey, do you have any questions on this one?
No.
So someone said do a motion, I've got it on my packet page forty two for recommended language.
I move to prove our design review twenty five dash zero four. And to direct staff to prepare for bold findings of fact, conclusions of law. And decision documents reflecting this recommendation based on the provided.
Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Right.
I.
I.
And motion passes. Great.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, last item on our action list is another design review. Approval for the placement of a prefabricated shed on the property of one one seven Poplar Street.
Alrighty, this one uh is again fairly three forward and it is. A. It's a shed in the the existing mobile home park. Um. The accessory building, it looks like a little old tiny barn, therefore meets our design standards is the wood construction. Natural use. Pretty straightforward.
Right, and it's going the alleyway then on the interior.
Yeah.
Near, yeah.
Needs to be set by the garments.
I don't have any questions or issues on this one.
You're on this one as well.
General, did you have any questions or concerns? No. Your connection started to crack up a little bit, let's finish it up for you.
All right, well, then I will move that we approve designer. We would you entertain a motion?
Absolutely.
Uh, I move that we approve designer review twenty five dash zero five. And to direct staff to prepare, prepare findings of fact, conclusions of law. And decision documents reflecting this recommendation based on the record provided.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
I. Great, motion passes. Good job. On the action, so regularly scheduled meeting is on the twenty first. I'm, I actually will not. Be here for that. I'm out of town. I could zoom in though, actually, I'd probably be able to do that if we were tight.
I should be able to make that.
I should be able to make that too.
Great. Um. Any other new business? No, it's on the agenda, of course not. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
All right.
I. Great, motion passes to adjourn. Great. Good job, that's quite a lot of things.
Yeah.
Let's write through.